401, and I'd like to call this meeting to order. Welcome to the September 3, 2020, meeting of the Baltimore County Planning Board. And this meeting is now called to order. My name is Scott Phillips, and I'm the chairman of the board. And I'd like to do a roll call and have each one of the board members who is present acknowledge their presence. We'll start with Mr. Schweitzer. Ms. Arrow, think I see you out there?
Yes, I'm here.
Mr. Hartman?
Present.
Halupka?
Here.
Ms. Haffert?
Present.
Ms. Wolfson?
Here.
Mr. McGinnis?
Here.
Mr. Heckman?
Present.
Mr. Heinold?
Here.
Mr., we won't have Mr. Herbst on the call today. Mr. Perlow?
Here.
Mr. Warren?
Present.
And Mr. Dyer, I don't think we'll have him on the call today. Okay, very good. Thank you all. Please join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands for one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all. Even, even virtual mode, we can, you know, remain patriotic. So I thank you for participating in that. You have your agendas before you. Mr. Muehlberger, are there any changes, additions, or deletions from the agenda that was published?
No, Mr. Chairman, there are no changes to the agenda as published.
Very good. Okay. In your August 28 email, you received draft minutes of the July 16, 2020 meeting. Has everyone had an opportunity to review the minutes? Are there any corrections to the minutes? If not, the chair will entertain a motion to accept the minute that's circulated.
Motion.
Second.
They're moved by Mr. Warren, and second by Ms. Wolfson. Any unreadiness? Not hearing any? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed to have the same. Not hearing any, motion carries. We have item up for vote. Our first item on the agenda is cycle 38 water supply and sewage master plan amendments. On June the 18th, 2020, Ms. Erin McKenna Stiles from the Department of Public Works provided the board with an introduction on the cycle 38 water supply and sewage master plan amendments. Subsequently, a public hearing was held for this topic on July the 16th, 2020. Ms. McKenna Stiles is present tonight to answer any questions which may need addressing. Do any board members have any questions concerning cycle 38?
I do, Kathy. My only concern is that subsequent to that meeting and after the, after the public hearing, the plans for the Liberty Road issue were submitted for a assisted living facility, and that was not known at the time of the public hearing.
Fair enough. Now, is there, would you like additional information from Ms. McKenna Stiles or any other comment with regard to that particular issue?
I'm, I'm just concerned that the public didn't have a comment, weren't able to comment based on the intentions of the property owner.
Okay. All right. Well, we have before us a cycle 38 plan. And if there are no reservations, the chair is ready to accept a motion to approve the plan.
I make the motion.
I have some concerns about the Seminary Avenue or property.
Okay.
Is now appropriate time to?
It is.
Okay.
Well, let's, let's do this. Why don't we hear the motion? So there was a, there was a motion, and if I could, could we get a formal motion? Now, no, if Nancy, you have the language, or if anyone has the language in front of them.
Mr. Chair, Jeff.
I have the language.
It might be helpful if you separate the issues out if they're, that way you can deal with the ones where everyone's on the same page.
Okay, let's do this, Jeff. Let's hear the motion. And then we, we need to bifurcate it. We'll do that. So let's hear the motion.
Be it moved that the Baltimore County Planning Board adopts the staff recommendation and reports for the water and sewage plan amendment cycle 38, reference number 20-03, to designate it as W-3 S-3 for the portion of the property of the zone DR1 and inside the urdle, including the segment of West Seminary Avenue and excluding the 2.47 acres zone DR1 and the local land trust and the segment of Maze Chapel Road adjacent to and forward to the Baltimore County Council.
Okay. I want to be clear. Now, I'm trying to make sure I've heard what I think I've heard. Does that cover all of the cycle changes? That motion?
That's only for one, that's only for the Seminary Avenue.
Okay. So we're all ready, so we're, let's, then, then we've got a motion on a, on a table. Is there a second?
Second.
They're moved in second. Are there, is there any unreadiness? This is on the Seminary Avenue issue.
I, I would like to discuss that, please.
Right ahead.
Start, right. Well, as I understand it, there are two possible sewer hookups for this property. One is to the Jones Falls Sewer Shed, and the second would be to the east to, and I'm not sure the name, might be the Herring Run. It's a separate sewage process. There's been a great debate about the adequacy of the Jones Falls Sewer Shed. In fact, there's been a project, a Blue Stem on Falls Road that was denied by the Administrative Law Judge and upheld in the Baltimore County Board of Appeals because, solely because of the potential adverse impact to the sewage. And I understand that the basic services map show that there's no, no problem, and County Public Works also says things are fine. And, but also there's, excuse me, the Green Towson Alliance has said that there are some potential deficiencies in that, that Jones Falls Sewer Shed. And in fact, that study from about five years ago by an independent subcontractor found that, that problem, which is why the Administrative Law Judge ruled as he did. Earlier this year, Baltimore County hired another independent study of the, that, by Hazen Jones. And I'm not sure exactly when that report would be available. It might not be till sometime next year. But I think it would be unwise to approve connecting to that Jones Falls Sewer Shed until either the report says everything's fine, or if it says they're not, then, then corrective action has been taken to upgrade. But since there is a alternative connection point, is it within the power of this board to require the developer to connect to that alternate Sewer Shed instead of Jones Falls, which would allow the project to proceed as scheduled? But in the event that the Hazen Jones report shows everything is fine, they could revert to the Jones Falls thing. I think it would be unwise to allow additional large developments to look up to it until we're 100% sure that the capacity is there. I, this, there are sewer lines under Lake Roland. So any kind of a breakage or overflow would really be an environmental disaster, not only to the lake, but that goes into Jones Falls and then into the inner harbor and the bay. So I, I would prefer to see some sort of requirement that the alternative sewer hookup be used instead of Jones Falls.
Okay. You raised a number, well, let's kind of break this down. So you've raised a couple of issues that for me, you need to hear from either Ms. McKenna Stiles or someone else from the staff. One question was, do we have the authority in our approval of the cycle 38 sewer supply to designate where that overflow would go? So that's one question. The second, kind of overarching question is, the staff has re-accepted acceptance of this? Given what Mr. Hartman has said, do you want to respond just to the merits of the issues that were raised?
Hi, it's Jeff again. I think there's two, two responses to that. One, yours is a recommendation to the county council. So you, if, if there's items you're concerned about, you can include that in their recommendations as, as a voice to help guide them. Your, this, your vote is not an authoritative vote, so you, it's a recommendation, I guess, is the, is the point.
Understood.
A second point is, I think there's two different levels of a process. Right now, your, your recommendation is, are, are the land use policies aligned to have water and sewer potentially serve this site? That's the question you're being asked. The question I think Mr. Hartman brought up is, as that property, then if, if moved forward, goes through the development process, then that question of whether there's adequate capacity, where that capacity falls, and how this site will be served is addressed through the development process.
And what would the county's ability to address any concerns that are raised as you go through the development process? There are other ways of addressing this issue. Is that fair to say?
I think that's the, the point. This examination is more on the land, is the land use appropriate for water and sewer infrastructure? Then during the development process, how is that infrastructure put in place to meet all the regulatory guidelines for development in terms of capacity, overflows, downstream analysis?
Okay.
Erin might have more to chime in on that section.
Jeff, I think you kind of hit the nail on the head there. It really is more of a land use recommendation. And just like you said, once, we're looking at capacity information if this project goes to the development stage.
Okay.
I guess a good way, a good way to, to highlight that is, even though there's, we know what the zoning is and what the zoning allows, we don't know what the landowner is going to propose, whether it's at full density, half density, three quarters density. So it's, at that point, when the property owner submits the property for development review, the public works side has a definitive number that they can start measuring what the flows are and what the impacts on those flows are.
Jeff, is it, my understanding is that the development that they're looking at is inside the urdle too, right?
Correct.
Right.
So.
So yes, while this straddles the urdle, the development component is inside of the urdle, correct?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Mr. Hartman, does that enter your concern?
Well, I understand a little more of the process, and I, the, I, I understand there was a development plan filed for this, and might have been just recently, so maybe people haven't seen it. I have not, so, but it is, it is single-family homes, and it's not built to the full density that the property and zoning would allow. But it, it still is going to be, I suppose, I suppose, close to that. But I, I would feel uncomfortable, it's, so generally, I'm okay with the project as is. But I would not be comfortable supporting connection to a sewer unless at this point we knew that there was the capacity available to handle that. I, I really am concerned that due to all the development in Towson that we've seen already, plus more to come, that, that any deficiencies are going to be, become obvious very quickly. And adding a large development like this, I, I think it's, it's just unwise to do that without knowing 100% for sure that it's okay. And, you know, requiring them to connect to the eastern sewer, I think, would solve the issue. And then if it turns out that the, I think, the, believe the closer one is the Jones Falls, then if it turns out by the time they start development that that one is okay, it's been cleared by the Hazen Jones investigation and report, then they could switch to doing that. But I, I just can't see approving things without, you know, 100% confirmation that it would be, that it would fit with the, the sewer capacity.
I, I guess I don't understand. It's inside the urdle. They have to get approval for it anyways before they develop it. We're just saying that it's inside the urdle and we're okay with them building homes. If we don't, if, we're already not allowed to build outside the urdle? If you say we can't build inside the hurdle on top of that, I mean, I have a huge problem with that.
No, no, I'm, I'm fine with the project as long as they connect to the sewer that, is, is there's no dispute that the eastern sewer has the capacity to handle this project?
Well, they won't develop it without going through the process of developing it.
Isn't that really public works job as they go through the entire planning process? Decide where it's best if they don't think it should go through the Jones Falls? And I hear you, Paul. I'm not, you know, disagreeing with you in that regard at all. But I don't think that us approving this plan gives them the right to tie just into Jones Falls. I think that's the entire process that we go through as you approve a residential or a commercial project in the county. I mean, it's going through engineering and various things. And if it's going to overburden the Jones Falls one, then I think they would say, no, you can't build it the way you want to if that's what it's going to do.
Well, according to the basic services maps, the Jones Falls Sewer Shed is fine. And there's a big debate on whether that is correct or not. And I, I respect the folks in, in the public works. I also respect the folks that have brought up this issue, some of whom are retired public works engineers and, and some in sewer works as well. So, you know, I, I'm not trying to take a side on either one, but I, I'm just, would be very cautious in approving projects or allowing them to continue or move forward unless we're positive that, that they, they aren't going to be an environmental hazard. And this is just one step in the process. And I understand there are, are further steps, but it's better to know what the issues are sooner in the project than later. If the developer could start planning to use the eastern most, more sewer connection, which I think is a farther distance, but it's still feasible. And then if it turns out the other one is, is available, then they could switch. And it, you know, they can probably be cheaper. But at this point, you know, I would not want to approve the project if, if it's going to be a possibility that it could be connected to a deficient sewer, sewer shed.
So what we're going to do, we've got a motion and a second. We've heard the unread. We've heard the unreadness. We'll put the motion to a vote, and then we can move from, from there. Because we clearly have some concern over reference item 20-03, 1400 West Seminary Avenue, I'm going to do a roll call vote. The motion was, be it moved that the Baltimore County Planning Board adopts staff recommendations and reports for the water and sewage plan amendment cycle 38, reference number 20-03, to designate as W3 S3 for the portion of property zoned DR1 and inside the urdle, including the segment of West Seminary Avenue and excluding the 2.47 acre zone DR1 and the local land trust and the segment of Maze Chapel Road adjacent to it to be forwarded to the Baltimore County Council. And that was moved by Ms. Haffert, and there was a second. I don't recall who did.
Mr. Warren.
Mr. Warren. Right.
Would, would there be any amendments as far as recommendations to the council about concerns? Or would this just be forward the recommendation to approve the, the requested change?
If there was an acceptance by Ms. Haffert on an amendment to her motion, I'll move forward. Moment, the chair is looking to take a vote on the motion that was issued. If it fails, there's always an opportunity for an amendment. So I'm going to go down. Ms., Ms. Pinero?
Um, I, I vote yes.
Okay, Mr. Hartman?
No.
Mr. Halupka?
No.
Ms. Haffert? Nancy, if you're speaking, you're on mute. I'll come back to Nancy, I don't hear her. Ms. Wolfson?
No.
Mr. McGinnis?
No.
Mr. Heckman?
I agree with Mr. Hartman's proposal amendment, so I'll say no.
Okay. Mr. Al Heinold?
Yes.
Mr. Perlow?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Ms., I'm going back to Ms. Haffert.
Yeah, and we're not approving connections today. We're just moving the property forward.
All right, we've got five to five. The chair votes yes. The motion passes. We'll move to the next item.
Mr. Chair, I would suggest 20-01 Bel Air Road, that seems to be a clear cut.
Okay. Ms. Haffert, we've heard from the staff on the water sewer amendments. Ms. Haffert, could you provide the motion for Bel Air Road?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Be it moved that the Baltimore County Planning Board adopts the staff recommendation and reports for the water and sewage plans amendment cycle 38, reference number 20-01, to designate as W3-S3 to be forwarded to the Baltimore County Council.
Heard the motion, is there a second?
Second.
All right, motion by Ms. Haffert, second by Mr. Perlow. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Aye. Any opposed have the same right? Motion carries. So that item has been approved. The next item, and I think there will be additional discussion, but we'll take a motion on 10-116 Liberty Road, reference number 20-02.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
On the suggested motion, in the action summaries that were distributed, there are varying points from the reviewing agencies, and they're labeled A, B, and C. So it might be wise to look at the map.
Can we, can we do this one a little, a little different before we even entertain a motion? I'd like that to present this, just a quick overview again, and share with us different views of the staff.
Thank you. Erin, I'll, I'll take a quick stab at this to try to, please summarize that. If you would just make sure I'm on the right page. The applicant is asking for W3 S3. A part of his property is inside the urdle, part of it's outside of the urdle, and part of it is outside the metropolitan district. Um, the recommendation from Department of Environmental Protection and Sustainability is to support the request. They typically support request as they think the water, the sewage being treated is, is healthier than going into a septic system in general. Property has pluses and minuses, but that's generally what they, and I think what their recommendation is based on. Planning's recommendation follows along the land use side that we support what's inside the urdle, having water and sewer, and the commercially zoned piece. So that's, tends to be how planning looks at, what, how does the urdle and the zoning match up? And then Public Works is not supporting the, the change to W3. And I think it's the, how the facilities, they want to hook up is outside the metropolitan district and how to get those facilities to the site. Erin, you may elaborate if I'm painting a different picture.
And Jeff, do we, did we receive those reports? Did I miss the?
Ah, yes, there was report that we submitted to the board that had all the petitions in them. It had all of the agency comments on them.
Okay. All right, Erin, did you want to elaborate particularly on DPW's concerns?
Sure. The, as far as the water is concerned, we weren't planning to extend the water that far along Liberty Road, and it would just be a little bit complicated due to the pipe. due to the pipe size that's out there. Right now there's a twenty inch main. So for us, it's really not in our master plan to extend water up that far. For the sewer, that's also kind of a challenge because you'd have to cross private property to connect to the closest sewer. And that would require an easement, which who knows if that would even be accepted by another property owner. So it's just a little bit challenging. It doesn't really follow with what DPW envisioned for this area. And so that's where we made our recommendation.
Okay, all right. So what I'm hearing is environment says they like the idea because it would be better for the environment. Planning staff says it's consistent with land use. And DPW saying, yes, but this is this would be a challenge and it was not part of DPW's plan.
Can I ask a question? Why would we? Why would DPW not have planned to utilize all the land inside the urble? Like, why would you have a plan that didn't fit that?
That's a good question and unfortunately one I can't answer. You can see even in this picture, the urble doesn't always coincide with the metropolitan district line. And so sometimes those inconsistencies kind of affect how we plan when we put up elevated water tanks and where we're going to serve customers.
Um, Erin, can you break down, and I should know this, but can you break down the portions of the property that are zoned DR three point five VR and RC five? I mean, this is a total acreage of point nine nine, less than an acre, point nine nine three. What's that breakdown in those zoning classifications?
Um, I'll have to flip through to the petition. I just, I don't know exactly where on the property the breakdown is of the zoned areas. I just know what the designations are. I'm not sure if, but really more of a question for planning than me, unfortunately.
Planning.
Miles, do you have the?
Looks like somebody's working on something here.
All right, if Miles doesn't have it, I can get it another way.
I have GIS open. I can share that and pull up the zoning for that.
And I'm asking because I'm looking at the submission that Miles sent us regarding these Beehive homes. And the footprint of the building alone is over eleven thousand feet. So that's a quarter acre building, you know, and it with a twenty one unit assisted living facility with twenty one toilets, twenty one sinks and a kitchen facility, which is far more dense and than the DR three point five or the existing RC five would permit. There's a little strip of BL there.
Miles, can you select the property so they it highlights it?
Okay. So the majority of that property is DR three point five?
Looks like the majority is BR with some DR three five and a small amount of RC five.
So can they do this by right in BR?
For assisted living, BR will pick up the adjoining density of the DR three five. So probably yes, they can.
On less than an acre?
Yeah, assisted living density is calculated by not by dwelling units by density units.
So they could do this with or without the extension. However, it may become difficult on if they have to provide their own water and sewer. But it sounds like they could do this by right.
Zoning wise, they'd still they'd still would have to get go through EPS whether they have enough reserve area for a septic system.
For septic system. And so we could be putting, okay, all right, so this recommendation.
So now you start to understand the different perspectives.
Right. All right. I trust that everyone is safe and I hope you you stay safe, but we clearly have some tornado activity in the area. The, okay, all right. Any, any, any other questions that we need to ask of staff?
Well, right now it has everything highlighted in different colors. So do we, when we make a motion, do we mention all those different like environmental protection and planning and public works? Is that how we read it?
No, the motion will remain the same. We understand that the agencies themselves are not all in agreement, but the motion really talks about planning staff recommendations. The model motion that we have prepared is a planning staff recommendation. And so I think the motion is still valid unless there is an alternate motion that is being offered.
Mr. Chair, if you you read, if A, B, and C are included in the motion, you'll have conflicting recommendations.
That's what I thought.
You'll need to if all if options A, B, and C are included will have conflicting recommendations. You you need to kind of pick one or the other.
Okay, hold on a second and let me, because I've lost that page.
Well, I I will say that this this project's in my district. And I would, my, I would move that we submit option C. The Public Works recommendations to the council.
Mr. Chair, as I read this motion, I realized that we do have three options and I think we have to figure out as a board which one we're moving forward, so.
So it sounds to me the the one that would be proffered at least at the moment, if if we're going to follow Nancy's lead, or excuse me, Kathy's lead will be option C. And we can see where that goes. Would you like to offer that?
Yes. I would like to offer that motion.
All right, can you please read it for the record?
Be it moved that the Baltimore County Planning Board adopts staff recommendation and reports for the water and sewage plan amendment cycle thirty eight reference number twenty oh two to designate C, W seven, S seven to be forwarded to the Baltimore County Council as recommended by Public Works.
Okay, you've heard the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
That was seconded by?
McGinnis.
Mr. McGinnis. Is there any unreadiness?
I'm sorry, which motion are we working on? We I we had Towson University just had an alert that there's a tornado going on here.
Yeah, we've got one here locally as well.
They have this, you know, voice system alert thing. Okay. Which of the recommendations are we, this is the motion for?
So we're working with which is to follow the recommendation of the Department of Public Works.
Okay.
You've heard the motion has been by Wilson, a second by Mr. McGinnis. We will do a roll call vote and this is the property on Liberty Road. Ms. Panero. Are you in agreement with that motion? Yeah, your name.
Yes, can you hear me?
I can.
Yes.
Mr. Hartman, I'm sorry. Mr. Mr. Halupka.
No.
Ms. Halford.
No.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Hainal?
No.
Mr. Perlow? Mr. Perlow? Everybody for a second, Mr. Perlow, can you all hear me?
Yeah, now I can. I'm sorry. It was only, no.
Okay. And Mr. Warren?
No.
All right, you all are going to make me earn my earn my living today, I think. Okay, I've got Ms. Panero, yes, Hartman, yes. Wilson, yes, Dennis, yes, Heckman, yes. That's five. I've got Mr. Halupka, no, Ms. Halford, no. I don't know. Or no. That's five. All right, you really are making me earn my living today. I I'm I'm going to say no. All right. That motion did not pass. Is there an alternate motion?
I would make the planning board's recommendation and I do not have it to read in front of me, so if Nancy could read it in, I will.
Nancy, do you mind?
Yes, I, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
I recommend, I mean, Chad recommends BW three dash S three for the DR three point five and the BR portion of the property inside the urble be forwarded to the Baltimore County Council, recommended by planning.
I make that motion.
You heard that motion. Is there a second?
I second that.
Okay, Ms. Halford seconds. All right. Any unreadiness? Not, we will carry that to a vote. Ms. Panero? Panero? Katie, are you on mute?
No, I'm not. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can now. Katie, I didn't hear you vote. Mr. Hartman?
No.
That's a no. Mr. Halupka? Ms. Halford?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
No.
Mr. McGinnis?
No.
Mr. Heckman?
Uh, no.
Mr. Hainal?
Yes.
Mr. Perlow?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Ms. Panero, I want to make sure I'm recording your vote correctly. Katie?
Katie, are you there?
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay, I vote yes.
Okay.
Sorry.
That's okay. I I understand and I vote yes. Motion carries. Right, so I believe we've covered all of the you all. And 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 this was it's important and conversation to have. Hopefully our elected officials will also pay attention to the spirited conversation and debate on that particular particular items and then make an informed decision as to how they proceed. All right, the next item on our agenda is recent county council legislation. Mr. Muehlberger, please fill us in on the most recent legislation passed by the county council.
Yes, Mr. Chair. First is Bill fifty nine dash twenty CEB rural broadband grant for the purpose of amending the twenty 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 one current expense budget by appropriating to the gifts and grants special revenue fund. Money derived from state funds and made available to the county through the Maryland Department of Housing and Community Development. Bill fifty four dash twenty CEB testing grant for the purpose of amending the twenty 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 one current CEB by appropriating to the gifts and grants special revenue fund. Money derives from federal funds and made available to the county through the Governor's Office of Crime Control and Prevention. Bill fifty five dash twenty CEB Towson Circulator Bus and Bus Facilities Grant for the purpose of amending the twenty 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 one CEB by appropriating to the gifts, grants, and special revenue fund. Money derived from federal funds and made available to the county through the Governor's Office of Crime Control and Prevention. Bill sixty six dash twenty parking for the purpose of prohibiting the parking of vehicles in certain areas of the Big Gunpowder Falls, providing penalties and generally relating to the stopping, standing, and parking of vehicles. Bill sixty seven dash twenty design review areas for the purpose of requiring the design review panel to review development plans for the proposed nonresidential developments located in a certain area of Towson, prohibiting drive-through facilities in a certain area of Towson and generally relating to the review of nonresidential development plans by the design review panel. Bill sixty eight dash twenty zoning regulations enterprise signs for the purpose of permitting certain enterprise signs in the R O zone for certain nonconforming uses and generally relating to enterprise signs. Bill sixty nine dash twenty zoning regulations ML manufacturing light zone use for the purpose of amending the zoning regulations to add the definition of minor automotive service, permitting a minor automotive service used by right in the ML zone, subject to certain conditions and generally relating to uses permitted by right in the zone. Bill seventy dash twenty Office of Ethics and Accountability for the purpose of amending the name of the Office of Ethics and Accountability to the Office of Inspector General, amending the title of Executive Director to Inspector General, providing for the construction and application of this act, providing for the continuity of a certain office, the terms of certain official status, certain transitions, and employees' rights, appropriateness, credits, assets, liabilities, and obligations, and generally relating to the office. Bill seventy one dash twenty capital improvement contracts for the purpose of prohibiting the shut off of water service by capital improvement vendors or contractors under certain circumstances, requiring notice of water service interruption by capital improvement vendors or contracts permitting exceptions as determined by the Director of DPW, providing for an appeals process and generally relating to capital improvement contracts. Resolution seventy two dash twenty rural legacy area plan application, a resolution to rank five rural legacy area plan applications submitted to the Maryland Department of Natural Resources for consideration and approval by the Maryland Rural Legacy Board for funding by the Maryland Rural Legacy Board for funding in fiscal year 2021. These plans include Baltimore County Coastal, Gunpowder Valley, Long Green Land Trust, Manor, and Piney Run Watershed. Resolution 73-20, amend the Perry Hall Community Plan, is a resolution to the Baltimore County Council to amend the Perry Hall Community Plan. Resolution 74-20, General Assembly and Governor Recognize Juneteenth as a State Holiday. The county council encouraging the General Assembly and Governor to further recognize Juneteenth as a state holiday by amending the annotated code of Maryland to include June 19th as an official state holiday. Resolution 75-20, Support of County Executive Expansion of Baltimore County Work Group on Equitable Policing. A resolution of the county council encouraging and expressing support for the county executive to expand the membership of the Baltimore County Work Group on Equitable Policing to include a youth representative from each council mandate district who must be between the ages of 16 and 25. Resolution 76-20, Baltimore County Adequate Public Facilities Ordinance Task Force. A resolution of the county council establishing the Baltimore County Adequate Public Facilities Ordinance Task Force. And Resolution 78-20, Approval Continuation of a State Emergency Executive Order Numbered 2020-002. A resolution of the county council approving the continuation of a state of emergency declared by the county executive on March 13th.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Muehlberger. At this time, I'd like to take a moment to acknowledge two members who are concluding their service to the Planning Board and Vice Chair Christina Burzens, who has served on the board since 2014, and Board Member Jonathan Hurst, who's been on the board since 2013. I doubt seriously if they're tuning in to us tonight, but just in case, Christina and John, thank you for your service to this board and to the citizens of Baltimore County. And on a final note, I shared with the board members an email and correspondence. I would just ask each board member to review that closely and to act accordingly. So with that, we're going to bring this meeting to a close, and I'm going to ask for adjournment. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
It's moved by Ms. Kathy Wilson. Is there a second?
Second.
And by Mr. Warren, I thank you all very much. All in favor?
Aye. Thank you, guys.
Sure, and thank you.